Welcome to everyone tonight. We're gonna go ahead and get started at 6:35. Tonight, we have two public hearings before our regular session. What I would like to kinda get from the council before we start tonight, a kind of a time limit that we want to make keep this to tonight if you would like. If not, we'll just go to the public hearing and let those that wanna speak, speak. Which way would you rather have it? Anytime... Okay. What we're gonna do then, we're going to start tonight with the first public hearing. There are two public hearings, the first one being the adjustment to Springdale sewer rates for the citizens who live in Lowell. And I think we have two, three people that can represent this pretty well, that's worked with the mayor on this. John just got interrupted, so we lost one. Sean, would you like to come and kinda describe why this is a public meeting tonight? And if you wanna speak to this, we have your names. Anyone else here may have failed to sign this, please give me your signature, and we'll allow you to speak also.
As we explained in that last meeting, back in '06, we entered into a bond agreement. And with those, the general funds having to been supplementing those, it's got so great within the way the increases are built into that over a 20-year period. It's came to the point where we have to raise the cost to cover the increases as they grow.
This is the first increase we've had since the agreement?
Actually, I think it... Yeah, we haven't had one, there wasn't even one at the agreement. This was prior to. We actually reduced the rates. It was a minimum of $6.50 minimum, and it was lowered to the $4.75, and it's been that way since, I think that was '05. It may have been '04, but I'm pretty sure it was at least in '05. It was prior to the agreement and entering into this bond.
And how about, does this set like a time? Like, is this gonna stay in effect for four years, five years?
This will stay in effect through the life of the bond, which is 2026.
Sean, are they able, are they allowed to adjust it in given time that they want to?
It's already structured. I can't give you exactly what the increments are, but each year, there were some increases in that. And what I did when I came up with this proposal was I took zero growth from where we were at, and covered all the increases, all the way out to the life, and this covers it all the way out. So, we're actually gonna be money ahead and be building up money to be able to have some money put back for seed to do infrastructure improvements and repairs as needed. We've got several issues that I'm sure most of you are aware of, that need attention, and we've had no way to fund those, other than just drawing from the general fund every year in budget time, and this will give us that avenue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to point out that this is not the council time for discussion on this matter.
That's public forum, so it's time for anyone in the public to ask questions.
As a public person?
Kind of the added piece of information, one of the other motivating drivers in this was the bond that we took out with Bank of America. And the previous finance director, and the finance director we have now, neither one were able to negotiate a new rate that was set at 5%. And where this thing really began to escalate in cost was between September 1st of this last year and this year, which moved it to an increase of $58,625 from $10,125. So that, that, our bills have to be paid, you know, and so that's why we took this to the Springdale Water Utilities. Heath Ward and Terry Phillips both apologized that they could not be here tonight, but they had prior engagements tonight, so. Does anyone at all have a question about why we're having this hearing tonight on our rates? Something you'd like to add? You're more than welcome to add anything or ask any question. I'm gonna close the public hearing on the Springdale sewer rates for the citizens who live in Lowell. Key emphasis, those that are Springdale users only, understanding that we have a lot of citizens in the city that are provided with water from Rogers. So we'll close the public hearing at 6:41.
Uh huh, 6:41.
Okay, thank you. That leads us to the second public hearing that we have tonight. This is a public hearing pursuing an Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program Fund or Funds, and we have Chris Sullivan, that's gonna be presenting to you, our person that'll be answering these questions tonight. So Chris, would you do us the honor of introducing Cassie?
It's my pleasure. It is, it's my pleasure to get to introduce Cassie Elliott tonight. She's here. She's the president of Visionary Milestone. She is the grant administrator for a new business that we have coming here. I'm gonna let her tell you about that, though. Cassie Elliott.
For the record, we'll establish this public hearing beginning at 6:42. Thank you. Hello, Cassie.
Hello, Mayor. Thank you, Chris. And I've worked with several of y'all before, and met you at various other towns and county meetings, and thank you for having this meeting at such quick notice when we get these projects. It tends to be timing is of the essence, so I'll try to explain it, because I know this has kinda came out of nowhere for a lot of the council and the public also. The economic development down in Little Rock dispenses funds for HUD, for CDBG projects, community development block grant money. And the entitlement cities for the state of Arkansas, there's about eight or nine of those, they tend to be the larger cities like Rogers, Springdale, Salem Springs, and they get a certain amount every year that are entitled of these CDBG funds, and they are to be used for different purposes. Some of them can be water and sewer grants, some of them can be fire protection. Your senior center that was built a few years ago was built with those types of funds, but the main goal of the funds is to be used for low to moderate income level people, to aid in the prevention or elimination of some slum and blight, or to meet some other economic development need that might be of urgency, like a threat to health and welfare of the people. This particular project came to me about a month ago. I've worked on several of these with some of the companies, and my job as the liaison is to work with the city or county government, the state that dispenses the funds, and then in this case, on a job creation grant, that an employer will come into your town, or they may already be in your town, and then they're given funds in order to be able to expand their facility, purchase equipment, or that type of thing, to further their business, add a line, for instance, or Tyson, or Gates, or that kinda thing. And then what happens with those funds is it is funneled through the government entity, and in exchange for that, job creation occurs. And you probably hear this in the news, a lot of times you'll hear about economic development projects. So this is kinda how it works. And so, the city or county is involved in the sector that it is public funds, so we have to conduct the public hearing to let people know that this entity will be receiving the funds in order to do, to do the job creation. This particular project, I do have Keith Scheffler here with Creative Things LLC, which they're already established here in northwest Arkansas, and, but they want to move their corporate headquarters to Lowell, to, in order to complete this grant. They also have received some additional funds and incentives over, over the next three years in order to create these jobs. The breakdown for that is 18 positions, or 12 positions, and they are full permanent, full-time permanent positions, 12 positions in the first year, and then graduating up on the third year to 26 positions. Usually, these positions have to do with manufacturing. As you can imagine, they make these jobs available to low to moderate income people through workforce services and that type of thing. They don't always, 51% of that doesn't always make that, but we strive to do that. That's part of the grant agreement, to be able to get the funds for the company and for the city. So in the long term, the city benefits in that there's job creation in the city. The company benefits by getting those incentives, and you hear about the incentives all the time through the news, and, you know, people are always wanting those incentives to draw those businesses to their communities, to help them grow and be able to create jobs for people within their community, and other jobs that will relocate there because of those particular plants or location facilities. So Keith, would you like to address anything with that, or if y'all have any questions? I know that's kind of a quick summary, but, and it's a lot to take in, so.
Thank you, Cassie.
Keith Scheffler.
Questions, comments? Sure there are many.
Again, we're not called to order as a body, so this is the public forum.
Yeah, this is where you give us the information, and the audience asks questions.
Tom wants to say something bad.
No, if the council wants to speak, they certainly are permitted to speak.
That's what I thought.
Well, they're allowed to speak, but we're not called to order as a body, so we can't...
Right, so remember when you're speaking, you're out of order, but you, you can speak.
Thank you.
I thought that was already...
I just, I'll tell you what I wanna say, Mayor, if I may be so bold, is it's fantastic happening. It's also great to see Cassie in town. Unlike a lawyer, when you see Cassie walk into the room, it's always good news. Always, always, always. And so, thank you for gracing our council chambers tonight, Cassie.
I'd like to be out of order first.
By all means. I think I beat you to that, but by all means.
On this, like on the CDBG programs, like in Springdale, it's usually awarded to towns of 50,000 or more. I thought that was the understanding, for residential, like modification.
That'd be a Cassie question.
And Tom, they, I mean, there's a variety of projects that CDBG covers. I mean, there's some disaster grants that I worked on from Hurricane Ike that created drainage problems. There's housing projects. And Springdale is one of the entitlement cities, so they get a certain budget every year, and usually what they do is they pick a low to moderate income area of the city, and they try to benefit either by building sidewalks, they can be housing projects. It kinda depends on the budget of the particular city. Lowell is not an entitlement city, so we have to put in application. That's what a lot of those resolutions are later on the agenda. Is part of that application, it's a lot about the site that he has chosen, and we have to go through environmental, just like you do with a water sewer project, so there's a lot of elements to it, but CDBG does cover a lot of different things, but this one is job creation. They have, I think it's about 10 million a year that they try to, to just further job creation in the state. So, it's a, it's a great thing, because, you know, you don't see that a lot in the smaller towns. I usually am working in Springdale or Fayetteville, so it is a great thing to be able to be in Lowell and be a part of a job creation project, or in a good spot.
How about where would these offices be located?
406, the old Westark Steel Building.
Okay.
So we're doing, well, hopefully we'll be doing quite a bit of renovation there. We've started some of the electrical, but it's quite a bit more to be done.
If I understand correctly, is it injection molded plastics?
That's correct. It's all injection molding. There's, we've got, we're completely vertically integrated, except for printing is the only thing that we don't do. So we don't do any printing. We've got, use a local supplier for that. Everything else are vertically integrated. So we do all of our own tooling, CNC, injection molding, everything after that, we do ourselves. So we sell to pretty much all the big box retailers, Walmart in specific.
Welcome to Lowell.
Thank you.
And I will comment too, a lot of times when I'm contacted about these projects, it is a quick turnaround for us. That's why you don't get a lot of notice, because, but Keith has been working with economic development for quite some time, and, so, you know, it's not that we don't want y'all to know, it's just that he just got his commitment letter last month to commit the funds to him, so that he could be able to, to do the things that he needs to do in order to get up and running and start manufacturing and creating those jobs.
Those, those commitments typically come late in the month, don't they? September 25th, or something like that? Is that right?
I've gotten them, you know, it's all different times. It just depends on, a lot of times with the larger towns, and they deal with the Chamber of Commerce, and, you know, for confidentiality reasons, you know, when you're dealing with real estate, and I'm sure competition with other vendors and that type of thing, that it can be kinda touchy in the beginning, so we kinda have to be under the radar for a little bit until the grant agreement gets in writing, and then we can get moving on a project, so.
The last thing we wanna do as an employer is, I don't wanna come in and say, "Hey, we're gonna do this," and all of a sudden at the last minute, be like, "Ah, sorry." It doesn't look good, or it doesn't, doesn't look good on us, doesn't, doesn't reflect well on anybody, really. So, we do all of our due diligence and try to make sure that everything's appropriate, and quite honestly, it's, has a lot to do with site selection. So, and, and, you know, the easy access to, there's a lot of things going for Lowell that, that we chose. I mean, dead center, in the middle of everything. If I'm down in south Fayetteville, we could've gotten, quite honestly, we could've gotten quite a bit more money if we would've went to south Fayetteville, but the labor pool and trying to get people to drive and everything else, it just doesn't work. So we feel like we're positioned for a lot of growth, right where we're at.
Good.
Feel free, if anybody has any questions. This is a public hearing for you all, too, so I know it's informational for everybody.
Any?
And the resolutions, I know there's four, and I know that's a lot, and I apologize for that, that we, we, the three, I think you've seen before on the senior citizens.
Yes, he's speaking.
The one is for the actual grant itself, and then the other three are, have to do with things, I was talking to Tom, they're already law. It just kinda reinstates, you know, but if you have any questions, I'll stay for those as well. If you have any questions at that time, be glad to answer them.
Any other questions for Keith, or Cassie, or anyone?
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much. We welcome this project, an opportunity to work with both of you.
Close public hearing.
We're gonna close the public hearing then at...
6:53.
6:53, okay. We'll go ahead and open our regular session of council meeting tonight at 6:54. And tonight, you'll stand with me. Thomas Evers is gonna lead us in the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Dear Father, thank you for bringing this body together to do the business for Lowell. Thank you for the great country we live in. Please give lawmakers in Washington good judgment to do what they need to do in the next several hours, and please always give us a great community, as we've shown on the recent polls, and help Lowell grow to become a center of northwest Arkansas. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I forgot.
City clerk, perform the roll call, please.
Thomas Evers?
Here.
Eric Shine?
Here.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Here.
Keith Williams?
Kendall Stuckey?
Here.
Dean Bitner?
Here.
Ronnie Breland?
Here.
We have quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. But please, okay, I have to see if everyone's got their mics adjusted well. Okay, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda items tonight. We have a Lowell City Council minutes from September 17th, and also a financial statement for September. Everyone has received your package several days ago. Have any questions or comments over the minutes or the financial statement? Please go ahead. Any questions to the financial statement? Now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Motion by Kendall, and a second by...
Jeanette.
Yeah, wanna do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. That brings us to time of our public forum. That's time set aside for those to approach the council about any subject that they might like pertaining to city. First on the agenda tonight, we have Joe. Joe, it's good to have you here tonight. Would you like to speak now, or reserve your comments until later?
I'm ready, I'm ready. I'm listening to you on the side, Chief, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, you're free to speak later if you want to, okay, 'cause you're already, you're already on the list, Joe. And then we have Rick Black, Sr., tonight. Rick, would you like to come and approach your council? Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address. Into the microphone, please.
My name is Rick Black, Sr. I live at 108 Greenacre Street here in Lowell. I have two issues tonight I wish to talk about, on behalf of my children. I've been told there is a project in the works for McClure Street, that only one-sided street's gonna have sidewalks. I don't like this idea at all. I prefer they have both sides, like from 71B to Lincoln Street. As we all know, traffic is terrible in the morning. You go up and down that street, you see kids walking, people pushing carriages, and little kids. It's highly dangerous. We also have the same problem down there at 71 Bloomington and Monroe. There's no crosswalk signs, there's no buttons to push to cross, and a lot of us who walk face this. It's dangerous, it's very dangerous. And again, we push a stroller. I have a child that's gonna be a year old next month. Have you ever tried dodging traffic with a stroller? My fear is that someday, somebody's gonna get killed, a child or a baby. I understand the city's under financial constraints on what they can do, but I don't think you can put a price on a child or an infant. So that's my issue, and that's why I brought it up. And I'm not used to public speaking, as you can well tell, but it disconcerned me enough, I wanted to come and talk to you about it, on behalf of my kids.
What was your name?
Rick Black, Sr. Rick Black, Sr. So I hope, I hope you will take this in consideration as you go forward. I appreciate this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that your daughter come in with you the other day, when we spoke?
Daughter-in-law.
Daughter-in-law, okay. And she was pushing a baby stroller, and I seen her going down Lincoln here later. I can address one of those issues, Mr. Black. On McClure, I believe we've got some right-of-way issues with sidewalks on both the sides, but we will look at that engineering project again and see if a sidewalk could be added into that design. But I know we got a real, we're at, we're broadening that to four lanes through there, and we're just, there's gonna be a turn lane for the school, and so that's one of the limitations that we have right there. Sean, can you think of any other thing? I'm just kinda gathering my information from previous meetings we've had on McClure.
One of those constraints was already addressed, but from Jackson Street, down to, is it Jefferson that comes in north and south beside the church? There's not enough area there, nor is it cohesive with the slope of that property to be able to get a sidewalk in without it being in those people's back porch. So what we had done previously in the sidewalk project is you cross along Jackson, and then go up Washington in front of the church, and then that brought you to that piece, and there's crosswalks, it'll be, we're redoing that intersection as well. So it will have the crosswalks as this intersection, and so there's a lot of improvements coming with that. But, you know, as, as long as we've got the space and availability, we're putting the sidewalks in. Yeah. It's just this south stretch out is, is pretty much limited, so this, on McClure, the north side's what we've utilized all the way out to the park at this point.
And concerning Bloomington and Monroe, we're gonna be asking the state to take another look at that as well.
I'm not sure that there's not some improvements with their forthcoming improvements in that project to do that.
I know, go ahead, Thomas.
I just had a quick question. When they improve this, and I haven't seen the drawings or anything, are they gonna keep this road that cuts in front of the church that, that's gonna be blocked off?
No, it will actually become a parking lot.
Okay, good.
You won't, you won't have access there.
It does make it hard to look back when you're trying to...
It is.
Come out of there. It's good in the morning when you drive into it.
No.
It's my...
Going down Monroe, I know there are the railroad tracks, picks up a nice sidewalk, and then it goes down quite a ways, then you gotta cross over and get onto another sidewalk. Is there any way, like Mr. Black said, about going, taking both sidewalk, sides and going down, and then when you get down there, by the old shilo, you can take a sidewalk all the way down to, just about to the bank, I think, and, well, just down there to the doctor's office, and then you have grass all the way down.
Well, unfortunately, that happened in a period where the developers weren't required to put them in, as they are now, and that's why a lot of times you'll see these areas that have a short piece of sidewalk at this point, and some areas don't.
Yeah, I know in 1994, they passed the ordinance that everything built after that had to have sidewalks, and...
So, yeah, they're...
I didn't know if it was that long ago, because the subdivision across the street for me doesn't have any sidewalks, and I wasn't, I wasn't required to put sidewalks in my place.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Black, for bringing that to our attention, and we're gonna look into that, and we're gonna try to keep these streets as safe for pedestrians as possible, so thank you. Okay. We'll close the public forum then at 7:04. That brings us to city projects and updates. This is a category that we've added to our agenda in recent months. I've asked Jim just to share a few of the city street projects, progress for the council, before we go on with any old business tonight.
As y'all know, if y'all been out on Mount Heber, we are wrapping Mount Heber up, that project we're doing out there. It should be wrapping up. We are finishing the topsoil. Far as the good news, we got, apart from McClure, everything goes good. We are putting it out to bid on Sunday. It'll be out to bid on Sunday, so hopefully, that'll be happening here real soon. So, other than that, that's the two main projects we have got going on right now.
Anyone like to ask a report on any other project from Jim, or we...
I'll ask you a question, Jim. There is that stoplight there at, I mean, the stop sign at Honey Circle, how's that gonna get changed when you got a, is it gonna be truly a five lane, two lanes in another direction, and a turn lane that's coming through here?
No, it'd be a four lane out here, as Sean said, and then it'd be a three lane rest away.
Okay, are they gonna put, I mean, a lot of people blow through that stop sign every day, you know, so...
I know. That's a dangerous intersection. We've really, we've kinda been discussing that, and I guess I'll discuss it with the mayor and the police chief. Years ago, that used to not be a stop sign. You know, it used to be just stopping on Honeysuckle and then we put that, you know, stopping on McClure, try to slow the traffic down. Be honest with you, I don't know how we, which is going to be the best way to handle that right yet. You know, with them flying through there, but with that turning lane in there, we might can get by and just open them up, McClure, and let them go through there, maybe not back traffic up. Because we get a lot of people complaining right there. It backs it up in front of their driveways when they having to stop in the early morning, so I guess we need to do a little more studying when we get to that part on it.
Good question. Any others for Jim? Thank you for your report, Jim. Thank you very much. That brings us to old business. And tonight, under old business, this has been a discussionary item in the past at the council. That's why it was placed under old business. No action has been taken. And here we have the ordinance tonight. It is an ordinance establishing new rates for sewer service for the citizens of the city of Lowell, who are customers of the Springdale Sewer System declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Sean, I see that you're there to take any questions from the council that would like to address you tonight, or myself. Any further discussion, why this is necessary?
I always have a question, and I didn't want to go first, so...
Well, you gotta be in order now, though, Thomas.
I know, I'm in order now. That's why I was trying to be polite and wait. Sean, last month, we voted, I think it was last month, maybe it was the month before, that we had to come up with $21,000 for a shortfall that we, the city pays. With these, with these rates, is there going to be a certain amount of that withheld so that it won't be a shortfall next time?
Right. Like I explained to you, I went all the way back to what, the period of time when this was taken out and what the current rate and the current amount of users were. And then we based the increase solely on zero growth or just like nothing else would ever change, so we wouldn't be caught in a bind. Because last year, the, the first of this year, in September of this year, and in the next couple of years, they rapidly increase it at a pretty good rate, a high sum. And with this, this will cover all those increases. And like I said, we'll start building some funds to allow us to have some, to fix some of the bottleneck problems that we have in the sewer and expand our water lines where we're needed now.
And that fund will be a restricted fund, so it'll be there. Another question, I know that we, and I hate picking on the step systems, but we have the three subdivisions that are step system and we've got more time not to have anymore. What's the life expectancy of those leaching fields, which we only have one that I know of in each one of these subdivisions? And most of them, they want you to have an alternative leaching field.
Most of them have two.
Do they, most of them have two? A five-inch?
And an alternative as well.
So what's, what's the, isn't it every, so many, like, 10 years, you're supposed to switch to the leaching fields?
And I, and I will leave that to Rick to answer more of those questions, but my familiarity with them previously. You know, it's PVC, and it's all about the install. They can last for 40 years and you won't have a problem. If it's not installed properly and correctly, you're going to start having problems immediately. And we've, we've had our share of problems, whether in the force main side or drip field or...
And would this be potentially, like, a, like, projects that might come up first? Like, we would try to get those subdivisions onto the city sewer?
We're, we're discussing, and with the recent agreement with Springdale removing the out west, the Cross Creek area, being able to handle it the way that we were moving. Improvements from them are forthcoming that we'll cooperate in. And we're, our master sewer plans at about 85 to 90% right now. And we'll be working closely with, with Garver Engineers and with Springdale Water to develop that out to where it makes a...
Because that would, you know, ultimately, when that, I mean, maybe just pennies, but it would possibly bring down our rates.
Our plan is that we would like to get off of those at one point. I mean, ultimately, we want off those step systems.
And that would help everybody's rates go down potentially in the future?
Sure.
Thomas, to clarify one issue that you referred to earlier. Those secondary leach fields are, they're set aside as those subdivisions grow. That primary leach field will continue to be open and usable. There's repairs being made to that PVC on an ongoing basis all the time due to tractor or bush hog damaging one or so on and so forth. One of the other issues that you may be thinking about is what do you do with the leach fields? If you do do a conversion to Springdale City Sewer? And of course, that would release those areas to be divided up into lots. And then those lots could be sold to offset the cost. Of course, we've been looking at these alternatives and law discussion, and that is one of the things that we were so pleased with is the new arrangement now that we have with Springdale Water concerning Benton Lift Station. It is a Benton Lift Station, isn't it, Sean?
Yeah, with the Cross Creek area, any, you know, we couldn't, couldn't take any of that area back into Puppy Creek, but...
It's a work in progress. It's going to be slow-moving, but it is moving in, in that direction.
Sounds, sounds good.
We, we discussed this quite a bit at the ordinance committee meeting the other night. I think we all agreed that it's, it's necessary evil to continue to grow forward. And as Sean touched on, as new customers come onboard, then, then hopefully that revenue will be generated to improve structure or infrastructure down the road. And hopefully, we won't be backing this boat anytime soon. But for the time being, it's cost of doing business.
And we still have one of the lowest sewer rates in the area, you know, so it's very doable in its sense.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask who prepared this ordinance?
It's a combination.
Who's the combination?
Yeah, it's a combination ordinance put together.
Because I see that, I pointed out last meeting, when it was first brought out, that there was no emergency clause on the title, but there was an emergency clause in the body of the ordinance. Now, it's the opposite. It's in the title, but not in the body.
Section six.
Emergency is...
Last line, section six.
Is that not acceptable?
Yes. Section six, in order to meet and stay current in the debt which was taken to finance and sewer service expansion in the city of Lowell, is necessary that this ordinance go into effect immediately and emergencies declared to exist. Would that not...
Does that meet the requirement, does that meet the requirements for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens?
It does.
Without it stating that in there?
It does, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't have my glasses tonight.
You were supposed to...
Sean.
Stay still and I'll hit you with the drawing.
Tom's supposed to be reading to me, and he failed.
I had all these questions, I didn't have time to read them, you know. Jamie, Jeanette, you can make a motion now.
Yeah, but there's wording that's usually required.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Sean one question?
Yes, go ahead, Kendall.
Just for a recap, I know we talked about it last meeting. The fee that's going up is basically the 475 is being doubled to 950, is that correct?
Correct.
And then per thousand gallons, we're to 75 cents. What was it prior on the...
55 cents.
55 cents.
So you go see a...
Throw up 20 cents there. I just want to know if someone asked me in the oncoming weeks when they get the new bill, so I can...
On average, they say, I think I looked at my last one, I was like at 3,800 gallons. So they say average is 5,500 gallons, so...
Okay.
Buck and a dime increase, if you go by them, plus the 475 is...
Now, Sean, when they first started this agreement years ago, they were supposed to go from, when the west was annexed and all this coming about, they were supposed to bring everybody online from Springdale all the way up to Rogers, all that area with the water sewer.
Which most of it is. I'm not following exactly what you asked me. There's a very limited area up there that is Rogers.
Right, but there is some.
Right. And...
And we did have a boundary change three years ago.
Yeah, we've had a couple of boundary changes here or there on, on request for properties, but...
Or, okay, let me reiterate, let me try to put this to a different perspective. Anybody that wasn't on Springdale Sewer or water, they was going to put, bring them on to it. Am I correct?
You talking about water service or sewer?
If they're inside the service boundary, that would be correct. If they're outside, we can't do that. I mean, it's, it's divided. You're either in Springdale or you were in Rogers.
I mean, if they wasn't in Rogers. They was going to put them on it?
Yep.
Did they give a time period?
And it's not everybody, right, Sean? I mean, if they're more than 300 feet away from city sewer, they can still possibly use septic system.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a state law that we don't, we don't really push that. But I don't think that's the question he's asking. I'm not...
Well, he said everybody who was on service would be on it, but that's not necessarily, a lot of people on water that can't be on city sewer.
Right.
There's some areas that we can't get to at this point.
They, they had like the three...
The road is a prime example. It's 200 and some feet above the flow line.
Well, I mean, they had like a 300-foot, if you was within 300-foot of their line...
That is a state law, yes.
Yes, then you had to go to it.
We don't enforce that technically unless they have a problem with their, if they're, if they have a problem with their septic, we will not allow them to replace it. They will have to hook on.
Right.
If that's available.
Right, that's what I was, where I was going with this, so...
We still have a lot of septic tank users in that area.
Right, I mean, there's, the reason I'm going with this is because you have three subdivisions here in town that have septic tanks in them, that I know of. And that's why I was going with it.
We talked about this.
Thank you for your comments, Ronnie.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to place this on, to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading by title only.
Second.
So we have a motion by Eric to suspend the rule and place the ordinance on third and final reading and a second by Jeanette. Ready to vote? Yes. Roll call, please.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rule and place the ordinance on third and final reading is approved. I will read the title of the ordinance by title only. Establishing new rates for sewer service for the citizens of the city of Lowell, who are customers of the Springdale Sewer System declaring in emergency and for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the ordinance as presented.
Thank you. Jeanette, second by Eric. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Now, is there going to be a timeframe on any of this when it's going to be done? Or is it just going to affect the citizens out west?
Well, we, we work with the citizens on a case-by-case basis. We're non-septic tanks and whatever the need happens to be being asked for. There are some people that don't want to be on sewer because of the cost at this point. And that's even some of the folks in some of these subdivisions you've referred to, Ronnie.
Well, I noticed that on the last one, it said from Springdale to Rogers, you know, city limits, all the ones contained in between. So, and it said that they could fluctuate on the rates and everything. That's where I was, I'm worried about this a little bit, they could fluctuate on the rates. And I want to make sure that's set in stone where they can't move the rates.
The rates for Rogers will not change at all.
Oh, I'm talking about for Springdale and everything. They want to make sure they're set in stone.
Yeah, the only, only change for those paying the minimum is the $4.75 increase and a 20 cents additional per thousand gallon.
Okay, so they can't change it.
And that's it. That's what we're, that's what we're voting on right there. That sets it in stone.
I want to make sure they can't change it at any given time.
That's what we are, we're policy and ordinance, we're the lawmakers. So once it's there, it's there, and we can't change it, not even a penny. Can't change a penny. We want to be responsible. Okay. Any other question before we vote? Roll call, please.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Motion to approve the ordinance as presented is approved. Ordinance is assigned number 93999.
What was the number again?
Mr. Mayor?
939.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we enact the emergency clause.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second on that? Second by Jeanette. I'll tell you what, Jeanette and Eric are after the ballgame tonight.
For a team.
They'd like to race.
Roll call, please.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Motion to enact the emergency clause is approved.
To answer your statement, sitting this close to Jeanette, you work on your parliamentary procedure very well.
I have my fine moments.
Okay.
I think that was the nicest way I could put that.
Thank you.
Old business being finished, that moves us into new business. We're going to get to see Cassie come with her resolutions tonight, as we have them in our packet. And we'll just take action on each of these as they appear. And Cass, if you don't mind, just come and grace us again with your presence up here in case there are questions as we go through these tonight. Remember, these are more or less a formality of reestablishing some things that are already laws. So, we have a resolution under new business authorizing the submittal of an application for ACEDP grant funds to the state of Arkansas. Tell us why this is necessary, Cassie, this resolution.
This resolution in particular is the grant application resolution. As any grant application, you have to have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign on your behalf and all the normal forms that we fill out, the SF424, which is for federal funds, that type of thing. I've guided the mayor through a lot of those already. And this just formalizes that for the application for economic development.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm pretty sure that I understand, but as we go through this, the city's not really required to do anything on this. This is just between the applicant and the state, correct?
Right, and two, I wanted to mention that I did not mention earlier, the city does not incur any costs whatsoever in this process. Everything is reimbursed through the state that has to do with the project and also, and I incur a lot of that cost just so that you don't have any budgetary problems with publications and that type of thing, like for the public hearing. So the city does not have to do anything. I usually handle all the paperwork, get with Chris and Melanie and whoever we need signatures from. We have to set up a bank account for it, so it's not commingled with any other city funds, that type of thing. So, no cost.
Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Dean.
Second.
Second by Kendall. Roll call, please.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number 13-20, number 13-20.
Thank you. Second resolution we have tonight for the council is establishing a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within the applicant's jurisdiction against any individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Do we have a problem with this in our city at this point?
Don't have any demonstrations going on.
This is just required.
Yes, these are, these three are the ones that are required that we talked about that are already law. They just like to serve as reminders. Remember, a lot of these projects are in very rural towns that are a lot more rural than Lowell, where some of the council members and public might need to be reminded of this. So they take the opportunity as part of the grant application to have you do this.
Didn't we have the fair housing thing with the senior city?
We did talk about that, that y'all had them. We decided to just go ahead and, you know, it's the same one thing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a motion to accept this resolution as written.
Second.
Motion by Kendall, second by Dean Bitner. Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number one, three dash two, one. Number thirteen dash twenty-one.
Thank you. Third resolution, establishing a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance program. Just brief summary of that again.
Some of these projects might be tied to, say, a road project where you are having to condemn housing. So, they like to remind you, even though this project does not include anything like that, that if the city takes on a project like that, that they cannot just go out and condemn that without providing assistance to those people to find other adequate housing that is like and similar. Like I said, in condemnation law, Tom knows this quite well, you can't do that. You have to go out and take care of those people that you're displacing. So, this just reiterates that. Wants to make sure if you do work on a project like that and you are receiving federal funds, that you're required to do that.
I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dean, second by Kendall. Roll call, please.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
No.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number thirteen, twenty-two. Thirteen dash two, two.
Fourth resolution, a resolution establishing a fair housing plan for the city of Lowell, Arkansas. Anyone have any questions for Cassie with this resolution?
We already passed one just like it for the senior center, but so it's no big deal. It's just a requirement.
I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kendall. Dean, were you the first one or was it the second?
Yes, sir.
I think Dean was.
I think Dean was talking before Kendall was done.
Trying to keep up the challenges there.
Roll call, please.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
This motion to approve the resolution as presented is approved. The resolution is assigned number thirteen dash two, three. Number one, three dash two, three.
Thank you so much, Cassie, for staying and going over these resolutions again with us.
I know this is a lot, so if y'all think of something later, the mayor and Chris and Melanie know how to get in contact with me. I'm here local, so let me know if you need anything.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
That brings us to a resolution in support of the extension of Dixieland Road. Uh, thank, um, Patrick, do you have a slide for this to, to put up? Um, this is SDPA funds that are offered, um, to special projects that qualify. Just attended a meeting at Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning today, uh, being a committee member of how we rate and, um, judge these projects. This project, um, we have a representative from Garver tonight, Ron Petrie. Glad to have you here tonight. You wanna come forward, we may have several questions on this. Um, this is a project that, uh, since I have been mayor every year, I try to have at least one or two projects before this committee because it is an eighty-twenty, um, matching type grant if you qualify. And last year, uh, as you may recall, we submitted Monroe and then we submitted project on two sixty-four. And Monroe was, or not Monroe, McClure, pardon me, was not considered a, a regional project. And then, uh, two sixty-four, we got held up by additional recharge study that's gonna take about twenty-four to thirty months. And so, on this election, Sean Ingram, Jim Hendricks, myself and, uh, Garver Engineering, we sat down and said, what project can we present to that committee that will be seriously considered? And we felt that this was the one that would qualify for, uh, this, this type of grant. And, uh, we want to bring it before the council tonight. Uh, had with some discussion about the project. And so, I'm gonna turn it over to Ron, let you kinda describe what we, how we see that this would help with congestion in that area, Ron, so.
Sure. I know, being, uh, part of the council, you're very familiar with the, with the traffic in that area. Uh, obviously, there's some very important businesses that utilize that road on a local level. But we also know Dixieland extends all the way from the north all the way to Highway sixty-two. So, from a regional standpoint, you know, th- this is an alternative to I five forty when you're wanting to go locally. So, you're not having to get onto a major thoroughfare, thoroughfare, I'm sorry. It's late for me. Uh, so, from a regional standpoint, you know, it meets all the criteria. And I, and I think you understand why. If we can extend that road to, uh, Apple Blossom, this creates another connection. And hopefully, you know, the road will extend further south and it will continue sort of as a frontage road. And, uh, will open up property for development, but it also provide that alternative route from I five forty.
On connectivity, I appreciate that. Where would this dump at? I mean, when you get all this traffic, how, how wide is this road gonna be? Four lane like it is coming up through?
Right, right, right now, we're proposing a three lane.
So, two and a turn?
Yeah, the, the existing road south of, uh, Monroe is three lanes. So, the, the northern, the northern portion is four and five lanes.
And, and once it goes to Apple Blossom, and what's the proposal? I know there's the new corridor that's gonna happen after we're all long gone. But I mean, is it gonna connect to that at some point?
It, I'm not sure which corridor you're.
Whatever that one that's gonna, the new four twelve.
Four twelve.
No, it, it can't connect to that because of the way it's, that is in the heart of that major interchange.
Right.
Where it's connecting to. So, it won't be able to do that, but it, it will just connect to the Apple Blossom.
How about future expansion beyond that? Do they see cutting that piece of property that was gonna be developed for commercial and cutting up to where?
I think that's.
Fram Road, it comes out on four twelve?
Ideally.
Or on wagon well?
Yes, sir. Ideally, that's what would, would occur.
The, the problem with that is, is the, the, uh, four twelve bypass will be going right through there.
Well, they go, I guess they'll bridge over it or something, I mean.
Yes, sir. They, they will need to take that into account.
I just don't see Springdale connecting onto that. They have the bypass right there go over the top of it. Uh, that just doesn't seem sensible.
I did talk to, uh, their, uh, planning director, Patty Christie, and they did indicate interest in, uh, their future street plan and.
Was there any consideration to extending Sixth Street instead of Dixieland?
I think I would probably have to defer to the mayor.
What was the question again, Jeanette?
Sixth Street.
Excuse me?
Was there any consideration to extending Sixth Street instead of Dixieland?
No. The, these are, I, Friday, we, uh, there's nine people on this committee. And we turd each of these projects. There were four in Fayetteville, one in Springdale, one Lowell, one in Rogers, and one in Bentonville. This, to qualify for this money, it has to be something that, there's all this criteria that has to be met. It has to be in proximity of I five forty for a better score. It has to have, um, uh, hopefully, uh, things such as a greenway being close by, which is, the greenway is just the other side of I five forty. There's so many different things they look at from a regional standpoint.
Sixth Street is even closer to five forty and the greenway.
The, um, it, it had no interest. That's all I can tell you. Mayor?
What, what kind of impact would be on the, where's Dixieland?
Dixieland started up at one, uh, when Rogers improved their section of Dixieland. And then we've had, what, two Dixieland improvement projects in Lowell. This would be the third one. And this would essentially, what, what was attractive to regional planning was that we actually have a north-south silent corridor, so to speak, that if traffic is congested on I five forty and seventy-one business, you can travel all the way from one oh two to Springdale. A straight shot, basically. And that seemed to be a very motivating consideration.
It was. For the, a north-south corridor was Bellevue and, um, Spring Creek looked at, being everything, about the only place you can build is out west right now.
I, I can address that, Ron, if you don't mind. Ron, uh, the way that this program is set up with the timelines of, uh, we got about six million dollars that is divided up each year from this pool of money. The recharge study blocked it last year. We just now got word just a few weeks ago that a company has been selected for, uh, that study. We've been told that study will take twenty-four to thirty months. Uh, so, you know, that was why no project on two sixty-four, Bellevue, or any of those areas was considered. Because we're talking about design engineering, basically. With the second phase of this, we could come back to the same committee in two years, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Ron?
Two years.
We come back in two years and ask for construction money at the same proportion of eighty-twenty money, unless something on Capitol Hill should not be decided here before long, so.
Um, what's the second phase of this?
What is what?
The second phase. You said.
Would be a construction phase.
Okay.
Property acquisition. Have we, uh? Property acquisition right away and then construction?
Have we talked?
We're just asking for design money at this point.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Unconceivable. I'm just like the, the cheapest, most affordable route to go?
I can tell you it, the, the city has on, on their master street plan, it's really, it just is set to match the master street plan. Uh, as a part of the study using these state funds, you'll have to do a, an alternative study for specific routes where we can look at adjusting the routes, uh, whether there's environmental issues. So, the, the exact route has not been set. It's just drawn to match the master street plan.
Can I ask you a question? What if, um, stuff's grown like saying on that field, like agriculture's grown on that field every year? Now, it, I mean, like food, like, um, stuff, can you bother with it?
Sure. There should be no issues with that, being, being within the city limits. When, in certain areas, that, that is an issue. In, in my experience, anything that's urbanized, it has not been an issue in the past.
I mean, this stuff is grown and, and produced for, um, it's like, you know, soybeans and stuff like that and purple, you know, for people to eat and stuff.
Yes, sir.
Um, so.
There's always a price with these roads, Ron, with infrastructure. There's, uh, sacrifices and decisions to make on that. If I understood correctly, if we approve this study, you would come to us with alternate routes other than just this one?
That, that's correct. And not necessarily us. What this will do, if, if it's approved, you'll have to go out for solicitation qualifications, hire an engineer, do, you know, do all that. But that person, that would be their first step as a part of the environmental step.
Have we, Mayor, did, uh, uh, in this election of this, uh, corridor, did you visit with any of the property owners, any of them down through there to? That, that's one of the preventions of, of this. We cannot go out and, the, the government, when these grant, when this grant money is available, has so many restrictions. And one of the things it absolutely prohibits is talking with the landowners on any, any, any route through anybody's piece of property until it's deemed that it's been approved by the council and, and went through the, 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 the proper procedure. Uh, then at that point, once the grant was approved and awarded, then, then of course, you know, those discussions would be appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, has the twenty percent, I mean, has that been allotted for in the budget or is that something we're gonna look at for next budget?
We, typically on grants of this nature, we do not include those in the budget because we don't know whether this, we may be awarded this or not. If, um, uh, it was awarded, there is a, a fund, uh, uh, from Jim's street fund that, that could meet that twenty percent. Of course, I would have to have discussions with him on that, whether we wanted to do that. And then, of course, we would have the option of, um, uh, pulling that twenty percent out of the emergency fund temporarily until that could be replenished. But it is, but it is, if it is a project that would allow us to, you know, gain thirty, three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars.
Mayor, just to clarify, so the public has no right to a hearing on this matter?
Not what we're doing tonight. Is it right, Ron? This is a resolution that's required.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution. It's a resolution showing that if I should be successful with gaining, um, approval of this, uh, application through this committee, uh, which I can, can't tell you the scores at this point, but I can tell you today at the scoring, things looked very promising. But that aside, um, I, um, at that point, be required to, you know, come to and say, okay, we've got it. What are we gonna do now? So.
But we'd be committing to nine hundred thousand?
No.
Or ninety thousand?
The ten, the twenty percent, yes.
Twenty percent. We'd be, we'd be committing to eighteen thousand dollars.
On design.
On design.
So, part of this, Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious.
About the ninety thousand?
We don't, we only own half of Apple Blossom, correct? We share that with Springdale to the center line. So, what's, do we have, what's the master street plan saying about Apple Blossom?
Apple Blossom, um, Chris Sullivan, you might wanna weigh in on this. It's concerned your department. But it is a ma- it's slated on a, uh, future street map to be a major arterial. And I believe it's for, order please.
Three lane.
I would just.
Four lanes with a center turn lane.
Cause if this went through, obviously, we'd be dumping a substantial amount of traffic onto the, on Apple Blossom, presumable.
I was told today that the model would, um, the route that goes, uh, what is that, when Apple Blossom turns into?
Silent?
Side of the road. Of course, we have improvement of wagon well. And so, it would allow a lot of that congestion there at the links and, um, McDonald's and all those things that are right there. And a relief route to the south. Um, capacities, I think they, they figured somewhere between twelve, fourteen thousand, uh, cars a day on that. I don't believe they'll reach that. But even five thousand cars a day would take that much off that intersection.
So, what would be the overall cost for this project?
We would not be able to determine that until the engineering was done, am I correct, Ron?
Right. If you're referring to, you know, the, the additional cost.
Millions.
Yeah, because as far as I would understand, we'd have to put a bridge across the creek.
So, Mr. Mayor, at this point, we're just, we're just basically talking or going to vote to give you the authorization to try to apply for this money that's a grant money, regardless this may or may not be the route that we choose later.
Yeah, because they don't, they don't want to award these grants.
We're not going to use them.
If we're not going to use it, they'd rather give it to someone else that would be supported financially. So that's one of the reasons they asked for a resolution.
But to do that, we'd have to put up $18,000.
And this route, Mr. Mayor, is just basically to get the ball rolling, there could be different, they could, something could change, it could go some different way. We're not committed to this way at all.
Could we, could we pick a different street?
No.
So we'd be committed to this particular project? This is the only project that we have before us, this resolution.
So it would have to stay with this route?
They, in fact, they're kind of behind the process now, running out of time. And there was discussion today about, in fact, there's more money there today than we had projects submitted. And they were discussing actually going around one more time with submissions, but we've ran out of time to do that.
Maybe Mr. Kiklak could clarify the actual implications, but a resolution is more than just an idle commitment. It is a commitment of sorts, in that we're saying, all things equal, we, this is what we propose to do.
Yes.
So we're writing a $90,000 check?
Eighteen, eighteen. No, we're not, we're not writing any check unless we are.
Unless it's appro, if it's once approved, we are.
In that sense, by agreeing this resolution, we are.
Mm-hmm.
You won't write a check until HCD puts a contract along with the engineers in front of you. You've, you just had one of those, I think, last meeting, and you voted finally to actually appropriate that money. And Finance Director will be here to tell you about the appropriation, you'll appropriate the money. But this is saying, hey, we know we're going to spend this, and we'll budget for it, and we'll get ready for it, and we're serious. That's what you're telling the state right now, is that you're serious.
Mr. Mayor, can, can I, I just want to clarify, because I've heard $18,000 thrown out there a few times, if you don't mind.
Yeah, let's clarify that.
This is an estimate at this point, you'll still have to negotiate a contract with an engineer. Our estimate on all those services, which includes all the environmental traffic and typical stuff, total cost that we've estimated is $450,000. 20% of that is $90,000.
That's what I understood.
Okay, so it is.
That's what I, what I thought was answered earlier. So, so we're on the hook for $90,000, not $18,000?
Yes.
Where did the 18 come from? That's where I was confused.
I was, I was misunderstanding, and I was thinking it was 20% of $90,000.
Oh, okay.
And, which would be $18,000. But no, this is, this is us writing a check for $90,000.
If approved.
If approved, right.
And page three kind of breaks some of those figures down. Because we don't know what the actual cost of construction would be, based upon the engineering.
Oh, that's all later down the pike.
Oh, yeah. But part of the process is that if, if this is awarded to the city, it's not, Ron, as I understand it, in the second year, we could apply for the construction cost, and it would go through the same judgment and criteria as far as, of course, if they approved it for design, why wouldn't they not approve it for construction? So you have to ask yourself that question.
That's right. You have to skip one year and then the next year, you can do it.
But it takes about a year to get that, all that done.
With, yeah, with the environmental part of it, it does.
Mayor, if we were to do this, we could move this further west on Apple Blossom if we were so inclined, am I right? Yeah, this is a suggestion, I mean, that's not, we're just showing how we could get around beside that subdivision, along that parking area and back over, but it could move further west, yes. And it could be brought in alignment to Graham Road. Eventually, if, if Springdale were to, you know, jump over and meet us somewhere, so. If we took it further west, we could almost use it as a frontage road to spur some growth along that frontage road.
It's true.
Say anything going around here?
Yeah, if we took it like this, maybe come through here.
My question is still.
We'd have to do some property acquisition out in here, but bring it this way. The thing about it is, once, once the funding is in place and the studies are done and the routes are, the optional routes are provided, then we can decide where it goes, right?
Good enough.
It'd have to be public hearings, of course, on it at that point, and landowners would be able to weigh in on it at that point. One of my concerns. Alignment's an important thing, because the fortunate thing is, there's no one being relocated by this project. That's a big plus.
Didn't you say that this was in the 2035 map already?
Yeah, and so that's another requirement, it must be on your future street map. And it's, how many years has it been there, Chris? No, offhand. I know it's been there for a while.
How about, Mr. Mayor, I've got another question. Since there isn't a whole lot of, the way this route is proposed, that should be a lot easier road, quicker road to build?
It's, it's wide open, so just, just the issue with the creek, if there's any wetlands along that creek right there, that's really the only biggest, the biggest issue.
Yeah, that creek looks like they could incur some, some cost with bridge, some type of bridge.
Our streets and sewer systems are critical to growth. I know when we talk about our infrastructure, a lot of times it's setting on the planning commission or setting at the council on these things, we think, oh, why change anything? But we're in a period of growth, you know, we've got a plan for this growth that's coming our direction, and these traffic issues are not going to go away. They're going to increase as time goes by. Laying aside the economic development issues connected with an artery like this, it still makes good sense in your mayor's mind to contend that, continue that boulevard all the way through Lowell. And I'm, I'm not certain of this, but I feel somewhat positive that Springdale will do some realignments, some reassessing, and getting that road on over to Wagonwell. But that's, that's a subject for them at a later date. I think it makes sense for Lowell, though.
I have to say, my hes, one of my main hesitations is, we have opened up Dixieland to the north and received basically nothing off of it.
Well, we are in the process of getting sewer put in there, and sewer was not put in, and we, of course, we approved that, that sewer project, what was it, two months ago?
Two months ago.
And so sewer's coming, you know?
And with this project, we would automatically initially put sewer and water through there?
That is not part of this, this resolution or this grant.
I mean, not as part of this resolution.
Obviously, that could be coordinated in.
So you'd have.
Project matured if we were granted this.
So you'd have to go back and file for another grant or bond?
Well, we'd have to figure out another way on the, on the utilities. This is for, this is for the road, it's broke down to where you can only use this for design, right-of-way requirement and construction. At, of course, a relocation of utilities, but at the time that we did those relocation, we could make decisions whether we want to help assist, might even possibly be some landowner participation and things like that, you never know.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we not accept a resolution as it's not, as it's written.
That we not?
Yeah, it just fails for lack of motion.
Okay.
You can't make a negative motion.
Okay. I'll remove that, then.
I really wish you would bring it to a vote, being there's been two years of hard work getting to this point. No, I, I think certainly we need the growth, we need frontage roads, we need those kinds of things. This is an opportunity to, to do some good things. I am concerned about the pushback that we might get from some of the property owners that we're going to cross, specifically the big one. And then I'm also concerned about the neighbors and where it goes, what it does. I'm equally concerned about, as my friend Kendall pointed out, the traffic flow onto Apple Blossom, which, you know, certainly this isn't going to happen tomorrow, but as long as our options are open to have alternate routes and, and taking into consideration other things, good neighbors, you know, that I would certainly make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second it.
A motion by Dean Bittner. And Mayor, just, just to be clear, this does not lock us into building this road day after tomorrow? No, no, in no way. It's just saying that if, it's kind of like this, if you hand a man $1, he hands you $4 back, it's just good business. And that's basically what we're talking about. We're going to meet this with 80% if it's approved.
But we are committing to $90,000.
But if it's not approved, you know, we're not going to do it, and we can't do it, because we don't have the money to do it.
But we are committing to $90,000.
This makes this project affordable for the city, and I believe it's a liable project for us to really seriously consider. I think, and your point's well made, $90,000 is a lot of money, but, but all we're committing to, if I understand this correctly, is that if the project is approved, we're on the hook for 20% or $90,000. And if that's the case, then I will contend that, that whether we do it at this council or when this council is dead and gone, that road's going to go through there somewhere, sometime. And any work we do now to lay that groundwork, I think, is a good thing. Now's our opportunity to do it before all the interchange is built and the price of that property goes through the roof. If we're going to do it, now's our time. And it's going to get done by us or by our predecessors, our next council.
Predecessor, successor, so.
Successor, yes. Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
No.
Jeanette Lassiter? No. Eric Schein?
No.
Ronnie Breland?
I stay my vote, conflict of interest.
Dean Bittner?
Yes.
Let's say the motion failed.
Motion not approved.
Not approved.
Resolution not approved.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented is not approved. Failed.
May I ask for a five-minute recess?
I just hung up on the $90,000. That's the project the city needs at this time. Once we say, we don't, we can't go back on it.
Well, but we don't have to do anything right now.
No, but we have to dump in $90,000 for design.
Yeah.
But $90,000 is gone if it gets approved.
Right.
I was going both ways, but the time my gut said no. Could I be swayed another way?
No. How much beer would it take? I make joke right there, joke, funny. Make joke. Well, the big thing to me is to run up there and dogleg that thing, cut off part of that parking lot. To hell with that parking lot. The advantage of going through that parking lot is it's already approved real good, so it's good for us. But if I had my way about it, I would do something like this. I would cut this off and come in out over here.
This is what I think's going to cost, millions for this section.
No doubt. No doubt. Yeah, the bridge across it, yes.
Because that's all lawyer.
But here's the deal, if we, if we were to put this access road here, in this, in this area here, then all of this now becomes prime commercial, clearly visible. That's where you would put a nightlights outdoors or a.
Agreed. Kind of what, kind of what you said about this side.
Yes, oh, yeah. See, access roads, those service roads, it's, it's where the bread and butter is, it's a restaurant, Rowan Rye's.
This almost makes sense, but it really doesn't how this intersects here, because it forced you that way, so that, I don't think that would make sense.
Right, right.
I agree with what you're saying. And I'm not, I'm not doubting what you said, and I heard what Sean said, and I agree, they probably spent hours, we didn't know that, no one.
My phone was.
Yeah, that would be my comment, but the other thing is, you can't make a first one. I tried to make, and I know you didn't, and that, but obviously.
Well, it would be nice if the mayor said, hey, what do y'all think? Which streets are?
Yeah, I don't have it either.
He did say that it was a quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Sean Conley wouldn't have said that.
Well, I think, I think, there's nothing that says we couldn't do this. The pushback from Jamie Hall, we want to, he's not like that.
Beverly in pink.
Wants to split your camp.
Pink, she's going in pink, lady is blue.
And if we did that, if we had a bad look at it, this might go, because we can narrow that road. His name from Barbara? Hey, Chris? Chris? What's his name? Barbara? Have you got this side? Is it, I'm sorry, Dean Bittner? Kendall Stuckey? Is it conceivable that this road might be just as well suit to make this kind of turn? And then we have this access road here that we can put commercial on either side of, which is, you know, I don't care anything about this here, because all I got to look at is fields, and nobody's going to do a nightlights outdoors or anything in the next 30, 40 years. But if we were to somehow gain access road frontage right here, south of the corporate doors, if we were to have that access road frontage there, visible from I-540, that's a gold mine, just begging somebody to plant something on it.
Right.
See, with that being said, we're to, to me, maybe it's too late, I would be willing to say. Well, that's, that's what I was saying, is that, is that this route is on second stone, so I'm going to go another, cut another route. Would it not be a great deal cheaper to cross this bridge, this creek right here at its narrowest point, as opposed to this one here?
Had the five-minute check?
Not yet, you've got a minute to go.
What are the drawbacks to that, Mr. Mayor? We weren't prepared any of this to arrive on campus. Mayor, I want to bring that back up. Can we, can we expunge the vote, bring it back? I'm going to argue that we can. So, Robert. Well, we'll have to get some, session by the attorney. But.
Mayor, Dean actually has a point that would probably sway my persuasion, if it's worth.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel, I guess, counsel, that's undo what it did there.
That's it.
We're going to call the meeting back to order, back in session. Give everybody a chance to take your places. Um, of City Attorney.
Of City Attorney.
I need a moment, please, we come back in session.
We left off at a resolution that failed to be supported concerning the extension of Dixieland Road. I think what I heard the council saying was that this route seems to be set in stone, and Councilman Bittner brought up a good point that we need flexibility in that. One of my suggestions would be to have the Engineering Department look at this and bring you some alternate routes in the future that would allow more options to look at it, or someone may have another suggestion, you know, they'd like to proceed with further, maybe you might like to inquire the City Attorney on any action you'd want to take. I do feel like, though, we'd need to continue to look at this to a later date.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to expunge the vote, the previous vote.
Why?
I'll tell you why during discussion.
Okey-dokey.
Do you want to give me a second?
I have a motion.
I'll give you a second.
I have a second by Kendall to expunge the previous vote. On what resolution, what was the number, well, we never gave it a...
You can't give it a number.
No.
You can't give it a number.
So it'd be too...
So we have item number five, resolution support the extension of Dixieland Road back on the table at this point.
Let me, no, no, no. Let me, if you don't care, let me speak to that motion just for a moment to try to sway my colleagues to vote yea on expunging the vote.
If I may. If, y'all forgive my silliness here, but the bottom line is that this route, if it is not set in stone, the only reason that I can possibly think of that we wouldn't support this project is because of the outlay of ninety thousand dollars, which in the grand scheme of things, really, although it's a lot of money, is a really small drop in the bucket for what we're hoping to gain here. The truth is that our future growth of this city stems from commercial, retail. If this road were to be given a route which yielded a parallel access road to 540, then that parallel access road might be very appealing to retail development, to commercial people like Nightlights Outdoors, Hardee's, or Restaurant Row has in Rogers. So, and again, we've got to, we cannot drive down the road at the end of our hood. The truth is that this road will be built, maybe not in our lifetimes, but it will be built. So it's our opportunity now to determine where it goes. And we've already heard from Mr. Petrie, I believe, that the brain is options. You know, the option that appeals to me, folks, is to turn this thing westward, run around the west side of the J.B. Hunt campus, be much less invasive on the Hunt property, run right down through here, cross the creek at its narrowest point to minimize the expense, because now you've got a small draw to cross as opposed to a large one, and yield a great deal frontage road out here to the south and the west piece of that screen. So with that said, now we have gotten the best of both worlds. We've exceeded our traffic ability right here, right now. Also, we're less invasive on the Hunt property, we're running around them here and coming down the west side of them. And then, most importantly, I think, we have gained all of this potential commercial or retail development to the south and the west. So I would beg of this council to at least embrace the opportunities, spend ninety thousand dollars. You know, it takes money to make money, folks. Spend the ninety thousand dollars, let's see what they come back to us with.
Mr....
Okay, we have a motion in a second to expunge.
Mr. Bittner, if I can...
We haven't finished discussion.
Yeah, we're still doing discussion. If I can just point out that if we were to look at Sixth Street for that same thing, we would incur far fewer expenses just to build it. But here's my problem, we're going to dump this traffic. We were talking about an exponential amount of traffic to dump out on Apple Blossom, which at this point, if we did it in the next five years, Apple Blossom is still going to be a dumpy little two-lane road with a big old dip in it as our drainage system. And then if you go around the corner, go into Springdale, it goes into this ridiculous corner that people go off in the ravine about once a month. And if I'm going to bank on Springdale to add on to this road and go south...
Don't hold your breath.
I'm not holding my breath. Once again, I'm going to go back to what I said before, we have not developed going north yet on Apple Blossom Road. Until we get one thing on the north side of Apple Blossom Road with the last extension and all the money that we spent on Dixieland, I see no benefit in even looking at, taking it south into a city that hasn't benefited us in any other improvement project that we've ever done in the past. Because when we look at this, we get a, yeah, they're interested to look at it, that's about, that's about the extent of it. Then when you get the 412 bypass to go just south of that, I don't see it as a road going anywhere. It looks to me like a road going nowhere.
Well...
If this was Sixth Street, I would absolutely be on board to looking at this, but since it is Dixieland Road, and Dixieland Road and Sixth Street, you can get from one to the other. So, I mean, when you really look at this, Sixth Street makes a whole lot of sense, Dixieland does not.
With that in mind, it's tomato, tomato. If we run Dixieland over here and hook Sixth Street, what's the difference other than this, you know, quarter mile of asphalt?
But what is that going to benefit us?
It's your argument.
No, I'm saying to run Dixieland diagonal across there, other than the buying that property right now, that I know the gentleman that owns that property is not a fan of the city of Lowell, and so buying it, his price would be redunculous.
But if we do this, irrespective of whether or not he's a fan, if we do this, then all of this now becomes prime commercial.
It's already prime commercial property.
There's no road.
He's got J.B., he can develop anything he wants to. He's got J.B. Hunt on one side and an industrial park on the other side. He's already got commercial property.
Is there anything I can do to change him on?
No.
Then there's no reason to go further.
Do we need to move on that motion?
We have a motion on the floor of expunging the previous decision, resolution number five. With a second.
So you can do a voice vote?
Yes. Roll call, please.
All right. Thomas Evers?
We're voting to take away the first vote.
Right. Jeanette Lassiter?
No.
Eric Shine?
No.
Matt, whoops, take that off, take that off. Kendall Stuckey?
No.
Dean Bittner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ronnie Breland?
I sustain my vote, conflict of interest.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Brings us to resolution number...
Six.
Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a purchase agreement for real property located within the city limits of Lowell, Arkansas. Chris Sullivan, would you like to come on that, please?
This is a 1.38 acre parcel on Puppy Creek, Goat Springs Road. We'd like to purchase for trailhead. That's the lot split that we did that was approved a few weeks back for the purpose of our purchasing it. I have a conceptual of what our trailhead will look like. It's a conceptual of what our trailhead will look like at the bottom of Goat Springs Road.
What was the appraisal on this parcel?
The purchase price is twenty thousand, I don't remember what the...
Hmm?
She's asking what the appraisal is on the property.
This must be you.
I don't think there was an appraisal on just the 1.38 acres, was there? Oh, I'm sorry, she's got it.
These funds will be reimbursed, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, they will. Thank you. Dean?
Mayor, make a motion, we approve the resolution as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Dean Bittner, second by Kendall Stuckey. Roll call, please.
Dean Bittner?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented is approved. It will be resolution number thirteen dash twenty-four, resolution one-three dash two-four.
Okay, that brings us to item seven on our agenda tonight. This is a, an item to replace Matt Jaeger and his resignation as council member. We have two gentlemen tonight here that have shown an interest in becoming applicants and to council's consideration for Ward Two, Position Two. Before we start this application interview tonight and process, do we want to limit the interview to any length of time? Because I think if we bring these two gentlemen forward, we need to at least give them equal time to ask questions. So if, you know, we're going to bring them forward for ten minutes, they should be given five minutes each, or six minutes, three minutes each, or two hours, one hour each, something of that nature. So I'll help get some feedback from you as a timeframe for this interview.
Not an hour each.
May I...
Not an hour, I hear.
Five minutes each.
Mayor, would it be appropriate to inquire of the two applicants how much time they need? Would ten minutes suffice, gentlemen, for your presentation? Five minutes, what works for you? Five?
Okay, then, that's what I'm hearing, five minutes each?
Yes.
Okay, does that sound good with everyone? Okay, and they'll leave just a brief time to allow a few questions, probably. So I'm just going to take them in order, and before y'all come before the council, I've met both of you, and I think either one of you is an excellent alderman. I know your character, and I know your passion for the city, I know the ward you represent. I've been happy to work with one of you in the past and to meet you, Connor. You had your family here the other night with you, and enjoyed meeting your family. So we'll just bring y'all forward where they appear on the agenda tonight. Connor, would you come forward and tell the council a bit about yourself, because this will be their decision tonight. The mayor does not have a vote on this.
Mayor, before he starts speaking, I'll keep the clock if that's acceptable. Gentlemen, when you get to the one-minute mark, I'll show you one finger, all right? And when you get to thirty seconds, I'm going to tell you to wrap it up.
Index finger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to pass out a picture of my family, I don't know if all of you got to meet them when you were here last week. My name is Connor Jones, I live at 215 South Oak Street here in Lowell. Currently, the operations manager of Peachtree Company. We are a restoration contractor. We're a licensed contractor in 12 states. They're based in Atlanta, Georgia. However, I work remotely, out of my office at home. We do primarily insurance-related restoration following catastrophic events, windstorms, hailstorms, and that sort of thing. We've worked Phoenix, Arizona, Long Island, New York. My primary responsibility is, my title is operations manager, but we're a small company, so I'm sure some of you that work in small companies understands, you wear a lot of hats. But what I do, for the most part, is estimating repair scope and negotiating that with insurance companies, coming to an acceptable agreement on what needs to be repaired. Just a little bit of personal background, I grew up in Missouri. We moved here to Arkansas in August of 2011. Because of the nature of my work, I'm very flexible in my location, I can be anywhere. There's a couple of things that attracted us to this area. There was a gentleman that I've known for years, has a men's ministry, they do outdoor events, things of that nature, and I wanted to be involved in that, and just kind of on the side, so he invited me to come help him with that. Three years ago, my wife and I attended a conference here and kind of explored the area and really fell in love with it, and we said, hey, any excuse we're going to have to move here, we would jump at the chance. So we did. Rented for a little bit in Bentonville, didn't know a whole lot about Lowell, but I was looking for a foreclosure as an investment, found this house over here on Oak Street, and we bought that February of 2012. So I've done some remodels, I'm just going to sit tight for a little while there. After we moved here, I got to know the community a little bit. I really appreciate the newsletter that you all put out. I just want to say that that's a really good resource. I think you guys need to continue that and expand that as much as possible. It really helped me kind of connect with what's going on. It was great to hear some of the mayor's comments in there and some of the other things going on. That's how I learned about the CERT program. I think you may have seen in my resume that I've had about four years' experience in training in disaster relief, emergency response. So because of that connection, I wanted to kind of get back into that and participate in the community as much as possible, so I really enjoyed that, got to meet Chris Sullivan was in that class, Terry was in that class, and that gave me a really good impression of the nature of the community. I was really impressed. Following that, I was just looking for other opportunities. I wrote a letter to Matt Jaeger, just to introduce myself, fairly new to the community. If there's any way I can assist or serve, just let me know. Didn't hear much back from him until a little while ago. He contacted me, made me aware of his move and the vacancy that was going to be here in the council, and he suggested to me that I look into applying and recommended that I fill his seat. And wasn't quite sure about it at first, but we discussed quite a bit. It was actually something that I wanted to do in the future. I pictured many years down the road, it's kind of an unusual opportunity to present itself, kind of the right place, right time, but it is something that I would be interested in doing. I think I've been inspired with a good leadership here, just by the numbers. It seems like we've got some good economic growth in Lowell, a lot of development for the community, the parks, some of the festivals that you have. I just, I really appreciate that. I care about where I live, I think decisions have consequences, and I like to be a part of that process as you decide new economic ventures, things that would have a positive impact. I think you've already got a good thing going. I'm not coming to council with any agenda. I know there's, the previous person that sat in the seat had to deal with other issues, but I don't have anything personal that I would be coming to try to tackle necessarily, but just to continue to improve on what's already been here.
Probably leaves time for a few questions, don't it, Dean?
There are fifteen seconds left in the five-minute interval, so...
How old are your kids?
I have a little boy, Nigel, he's four and a half, and Gordon is eleven months.
Any final question?
Does your wife work out of the home?
No, she's a stay-at-home mom. She helps take care of the boys while I'm working.
And since you work from home, you would have no problem with the time of the council meetings?
No, ma'am.
And we also have a commitment to participate on at least one committee, and you would have no problem with that either.
Yeah, I already spoke to Mr. Bittner about that last week, regardless of whether or not...
It's not the only committee. That's not the only one.
Thank you very much, Connor. We appreciate your willingness to serve the city. Moves us to Terry Sayer. Terry, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Most of y'all have served with me on the council, and I've served with you. My name is Terry Sayer, I live at 207 South Melody. I've been a member of this community for the past sixteen years. I've been active and semi-active with the last three administrative... I've been active and semi-active with the last three administrations, starting with the Biggers administration, trying to get the puppy sales off of the street corner in front of the RVest Bank, which we were successful in doing in, in Mr. Long's administration. I sit on the council. I have one daughter, four grandchildren, two great-grandchildren. They all live within the northwest Arkansas area, Bentonville and Bethel Heights. I want to continue doing what's right for the community, whether it's represented or whether it's helping on a committee or whatever. That's about it for me.
Any questions for Terry? Ronnie? I see you pulling your microphone. That must be my question.
Terry, how many committees do you serve on it right now?
Right now, I serve on the ordinance committee.
Is that the only one?
So far, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Terry, you've got, you've got about three and a half minutes.
Do you attend very many of the planning commission meetings?
When I, when I'm available, yes, I come to the planning commission meetings. Sometimes it's not convenient, let's just say, whether it's a workload or whether I do have a friend that I do work for that's, that's semi-handicapped, and so on and so forth. I did take some time off this, earlier this year, to, to work for, for him, take care of his dog kennels, help him and his wife recover from major surgery. His wife suffers from dementia. June and I took care of her until she was fully diagnosed. And, you know, we, we try to do stuff like that when it's, when it's available. I'm going to leave it to the council. It's your decision. I believe Connor is, is well-adapted for, for this seat as well as I. And I'm going to leave it up to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out one thing to both Connor and Terry, that this seat is the seat number two, which means it'll be up for, well, it'll be up for reelection the end of next year. This appointment would be through the 31st of next year. And then the seat would be up for reelection, and it would be for a four-year term. And at that point, our, our seats become staggered.
Thank you for pointing that out, Jeanette.
And at this point, I'd like to move, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
A motion by Jeanette to adjourn to executive session, and a second by Ronnie Breland. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause like a sign. We are adjourned from regular business session at 8:29. I'll put, live at hundreds of hours in that. Try to get a few hundred thousand dollars. I got pretty high there for a while.
I can tell that the moor...
That's the first time I grabbed him.
He's getting pushed, but the stronger he feels. Comeback is something very different.
Don't think it will be. Tight or some type of...
Dean can't be political, and Keith just wants to...
Right. Dean couldn't persuade him.
Boy, it seems like either one of these gentlemen would be nice to have a conversation.
So where's Sixth Street? I'm not familiar with Sixth Street, being such a good arterial artery.
It's, he wouldn't, he'd never been on it, because it doesn't go anywhere.
Oh, is that it?
It, uh, it is a little tiny narrow street. Ends at the Luke and Third.
Oh, okay.
Ends in the Park and Road. Ends in the south, I don't know where it goes. But it's a frontage road that I think only, you'd only use if you owned a JV Hunt corporate.
Okay, that would make sense.
Let's see where it could go. Yeah, it stops. It's the silliest thing in the world. I mean, look what they're saying.
Uh-huh.
Here it is. This is Sixth Street. It ends at JV Hunt.
Right.
Nobody uses it here at all.
Right, right.
If you want to go to this hotel, I guess.
Heavens, no.
And it ends right there.
Yeah. At the church, no, no.
It's quite literally stupid. No one can use, idea of this, the reason the state government was about to give us some state and federal money is because it connects one jurisdiction to another jurisdiction. Rogers, wait. Yeah, Rogers. But this goes to Rogers, right? So that's what the federal state government love right now. They love connecting places.
Sure, sure.
Whereas Sixth Street is completely, it's all going.
Land law?
Yeah, there's no, I mean, you can't draw it here, because this is all about to be taken up on a huge interchange, which is what we're... They couldn't do that. So there's nowhere for it to go. Whereas this, actually land, stops right here. There's like a barrier there. It's totally locked, and you can't go on the straight.
Sure. You're telling me that there's no way we can persuade that fellow to sell? I can't imagine it...
Worth, I mean, it's not worth new, it was, it used to be anyway.
No.
I don't mean to be glib about that.
If it was...
You would condemn it if you couldn't negotiate.
I know you would, but if it, if that area was highly, because I looked at buying a house out in that area, and the first thing they told me was they're going to build a superhighway right through the middle of that beautiful land that I was looking at, you know? I said, well, that takes care of my house, and I'm not going to sit here and look at a beautiful, at a, at an interchange road that comes through here. And if it was already highly industrial, it would have been developed already, you know? If it's that hot potato.
No, the argument would be that the road that they would have built would make it more...
Yes, it would, yes, it would, I know. But it's, so someone's already bought the land, they already know, because they've been talking about it for a long time. I was going to buy that property 10 years ago. They said, well, you'll be sitting here looking at a... I said, no, I want to look at that pasture land, and I want to look at that. So I didn't want to buy it. So someone has it, somebody will make money on it. Can the mayor bring it back up later?
I, I recommend that you change it for your...
Yeah.
Go back to the state and say, hey, my council was a little bit...
Yeah.
Jeff Hawkins, is he the transportation guy?
Absolutely.
That engineer kind of liked it, like any engineer, no personal...
Right, right. He didn't sell it.
After he said he was supposed to be in bed.
Thanks. I know it, I know it.
Police chief.
It's bad in my age. I am, I'm having some creative differences with myself.
Kurt is adorable, too.
No, it is, I'm just saying. She is hard to get, that, that what in the world do they make her happy, so...
I'm, I'm, here's my Christmas presents.
That picture of Christmas.
We have my, my Christmas presents.
Light better not on this end of the word.
Big box on the front of the Christmas presents.
I don't know what happened there.
I don't know where he is.
I can't wait.
It's something I wanted to do, it's a new reality. I just made it up.
They were listening to you.
We'll have to take it a bit or something, simple. No, it's, it's... Oh, yes, okay. Are you kidding? I don't have keys to it. He's got the car, he got it every day. I asked, um... I can't ask him for two hundred dollars. I don't think it's recovery, just to... He asked us for him.
Oh, Aaron's got a tree, right?
Okay.
Faint gratitude from...
Thank you for the gum, honey. Tastes delicious.
Do I provide the advantage of real estate transactions? So where are we? Where's the contact? Having a story. No. How about, where are you?
CJ? Are you missed? I'm not coming to planning commission and then explaining your report every month, am I? Is that the reason? No, yeah. Things are too long.
Now, after this, on Monday. She has technical... She's been taking by the plan, the city council, board members. Yeah, elect not to come because of how far it is from my house. In fact, I don't go home.
I present your clothes.
Now, you shouldn't come, because you're people across the street.
I know. I just typed up today's planning finished list, there are seven pages. I just talked to Matt.
He's getting counsel.
And just got, yeah, and this guy that came for, with even no decision made, it was, um... In his situation, please.
So let's talk tomorrow, then we'll meet here.
Eight pages of conversation between county, but he repeated himself over and over and over. He wasn't for the trailer, one of those silver trailers. Yeah. Liquor store.
So, uh...
Now...
I'll work with you tomorrow.
If you have conditional uses. But it now is coming back November the 4th, so... You have to get the license?
Ford himself.
I don't understand that.
Address didn't put on the, the label was down there.
Oh, because if he didn't get what he wanted that night, now, he's got his license. So I'm sorry the guy didn't do it faster, but, you know, he's coming November the 4th. I guess I should ask him what's going on.
Nor should I.
He doesn't represent him, so he's not...
I had two people try to get me involved in that.
I wouldn't bring anybody.
What do you think about this? And I was like, what? One, you think I'm going to pick the one that's harder to enforce, or the one that's...
Yeah, you have to...
But tomorrow, we'll listen to the court.
The reality is, I'm going to pick the one that's easier. I think you guys decide. I go in, I'll enforce whatever you all decide.
He's looking for a three thousand square foot building down there, in that hole.
Mayor, Chief, I don't see...
It's flat line.
Listen, it's all, you know, an awful narrative.
Or is it even a street? That is really high. Taking care of people, you put dirt in like that high, it gives...
Taking care of people, you put dirt in like that high, it gets, where you can go on it.
Gotta make sure.
That's the background.
Seriously.
He's gonna make a club out of me.
Now, there's that way with some of our roads, highway four, you may take away my mind.
Yeah, right.
That'd been high. That road, road breaks.
So.
That's true. So we might make enough.
Yeah, when I realize it won't work, they're gonna be able to. By the time they finally announced they bought the property, they've already done construction. Question here, like they're wrong for this, so you just gotta do all these contractions.
Contractions.
Yeah. All that stuff. It's intensive to do a, uh, just a quick turnaround on plan next. Kinda have that same issue. End up, uh, what's up, the across NBC, you know, that blossom where that dirt.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's already. We're gonna break that.
What about down here on, um, apples, we were talking about, yeah, across NBC, you're right, yeah, yeah, that's, I didn't catch that in my mind, but. Yeah, I thought about that, they stripped it and I thought.
Just like proud, you don't talk.
It's okay that they stripped it because it wasn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be able to build along the way. They really. Yeah, they got that, the cops were out of the way. Hopefully they're gonna offset some of the cost of raising that level. They want you to stop over, walk there, then you put it at a lower level.
Okay. But they haven't done any workouts since we, they came before the council. Problem.
Deals.
I'm, I'm gonna ask for some meds. Has Tom put up his building?
Plans did get dropped. Plans did get dropped.
I thought those were manned with dirt, that was pretty high for a while, like we didn't dug out the foundation or something.
That's, uh.
That cars?
Process, start up the process material.
To begin to put the building to process for something else.
That material, that big pile of quote-unquote dirt.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
It's still there.
Yeah.
But it is being processed now. As a cellar board.
Oh, is it?
Covering. Now, this is processing. Stuff we want to do behind it.
Oh, really? Oh, really? Yeah, that's dirt?
Wish we'd have something happen.
Now there's a way to process it to make your orange stuff. Three different sides.
Really?
That are gonna be. When he taking their money.
You're kidding me?
That means we have lots of products stacked up.
Oh my, how come I can't find something like that?
No.
Just to make us, in remark to that, I quit teaching, music teacher for years. And here at God, Christmas, I closed. So then I was thinking, you know, maybe I just kinda messed up that though. And I said, well, I had ten people call me, I opened up and teach again. I'm calling last night, two people wanted to come back. I, I, I said to myself, well, that's two, how long do I have to do the other eight?
Right, there you go. We're getting ready to start tannering guitars.
Yeah.
And, uh, um, he does that, likes that, wants to, he was talking about it now too.
Uh huh. Yeah. Yeah.
I just don't wanna support this a little bit.
Call, call this, as less appearance, we'll study with the child for a certain length of time, minimums two years, you know, but. So they make progress to do something with it. Before I find out they're not gonna be all right. Gets us guitar. Generally do, what's funny is anything they can carry around, do in front of other people, they just don't tap. Yeah, it doesn't move out of that choir. It just isn't as exciting to take your friends to and listen to you anyway. Funny.
A lot of toys is not hard. Play music with me. Anytime you want.
Right.
There's nothing like better than live.
Mm-hmm.
Got your kid playing around? I can only imagine how great.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Now it's a two kids. Whatever jam, he goes down. I listened to that.
Yeah.
All the time.
Mm-hmm.
You're particularly a lot of guitar man. I've got ten of them, piano, Scotty Davis.
Getting a mustache on the other. Mustache gives away, you know.
Yeah.
I've got one with a mustache.
Yeah.
But he's still, so he's cop. He's still gonna hear it all.
You got Jedek.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go figure.
Gonna be a horn player.
I think we're used to always seeing.
Even likes drums.
Almost the same.
That's right. And some kids just absolutely have built-in talent and they go from instrument to instrument. I never got a piano.
That's.
Yeah. Cause I'm a voice.
About anything, a little bit of effort to play.
Uh huh. Yeah, piano and guitar have the same keys, um, I'm, I'm talking about key structure, you do you play? You don't?
I've got four guitars, I can't play them.
Okay. I lick mine. Oh, they're nice. Um, they have the same key structures and chord progressions and so forth, and so on, so they. Now piano, difficult instrument, but, but, because it uses everything in the body, it's both feet, both hands, okay. However, it's gonna be getting you to start off simple. And leads to it, but they, once they get the foundation, uh, all the keys and, and all the notes, and all the rhythms, and all the tempos and bloody vibes. It's just different staff, for different instruments, and they can. Yeah. Absolutely. I never could pound it in kids' heads enough that you've got to learn to read, because some kids won't. Yeah, I, like, you are limited, someone's gotta play it for you first.
Oh, yeah.
But if you can pick it up and learn to read it, it's not that difficult, you're not limited, you can sight read anything. Just. No. Okay. Uh huh, uh huh, yeah. Yeah, plus if he gets it, well, just to be interested. He'll trip, he'll, he'll find something, not great to, but anyway. Choir school, ensembles, jazz band, England, and band orchestra. I always tell my kids, if you'll take two years of piano, you'll be first year of being a promise for the rest of your life, if you really wanna be, you know? Cause you've already got, learn to read, you already know the tempos and the markings. Uh, and most of the kids that take piano can do that. But anyway, um, they're either gonna listen to it, or they're gonna create it, maybe he's gonna write something he doesn't know. Um, or he's gonna join somebody, or who's gonna do music for somebody for, it's just practice, all the exposure they get. Don't know what you're gonna do to you, done it. Patrick. Oh, they're coming back. Yeah, uh, they're coming back.
The G is a Y. How that works? Warriors, warriors. There should be no excuse for that, huh? What's that? You're not making it to that, should be no excuse. Oh, yeah, you'll enjoy it, I'm gonna go.
The biggest loser.
Oh, yeah, it's not too far in.
Fortunately with my DirecTV DVR, I can record five shows at a time.
No, I'm actually just fixing.
You sound like a commercial, next thing you're gonna say is in fifteen minutes, you could save fifteen percent or more.
Yeah?
I don't watch TV.
Okay.
I direct TV.
Like I said, you sound like a commercial.
Really was, Senator.
You know, I said that to the DirecTV guy the other day.
He's a good egg. Good Democrat. It's a shit she does this.
It's a yeti.
Every time he's like stealing chips at night or something. He's a good egg.
Yeti, he's holding it back.
He's saying that's like a chip commercial.
We're gonna reconvene the regular council meeting at. Eight, fifty-six.
Uh huh. Eight, fifty-six.
Um. I would entertain a motion to affirm a nomination from the council from the executive session.
So moved. Second.
You gotta say it. Entertain a motion to affirm the appointment of.
Okay, fine.
In the name of the individual, please.
I was drumming. Mayor, I make a motion that, uh, after executive session, we appoint Connor Jones to the position of the vacant seat, Ward Two, position two.
For the.
Second.
Remainder of the term.
Oh. Okay, for the remainder of the term.
I'm just throwing that in there. You wanted to be in charge while ago. Now you don't.
Was that the second from Kenny Stuck?
Yeah.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, like so?
Welcome aboard Connor. You'll need to see, um, probably Chris. Chris or Melanie to get, you'll need to get your oath and all of that stuff.
And Terry, thank you for your, your time. Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
It wasn't an easy choice, I mean, we. Appreciate that. I'm sorry, sir. There was no bad decision, that's what made it tough.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. Okay, being at this late hour, we have a few more things on our agenda tonight. Uh, that brings us to committee reports. Would you like to make a report on ordinance committee?
Mayor, we met on the, uh, on the thirtieth of September, uh, for about an hour and a half, I think that meeting schedule works well. Um, convening at, uh, five fifteen or five twenty-five, if your chair gets there late, and I apologize for that. Um, so, but we did, uh, meet on that night, we are working on a, uh, an ordinance dealing, uh, with a matter that Ms. Sullivan's, uh, working with, uh, Mr. Kicklack on, trying to get that situated. Also, uh, I have distributed tonight a, uh, resolution, it's a sample resolution to bring, uh, nationwide retirement services in, uh, to the city of Lowell. And, uh, I'll ask Tom, if you don't mind, to look at this resolution, if you can draft, uh, something like that, or, or bring it to the, the, uh, ordinance committee, we'll draft it. Um, but I think it's important that we go ahead and, and get down this path of getting 401Ks and 457Bs, um, in place for all of our personnel. 457Bs, for those of you don't know, are uniformed, uh, fire and police personnel, it's a pre-tax deferred compensation program. Um, it's very, uh, it, it's a, a very, very good thing for the employees. It, there is no matching city funds, it's all solely their contribution, um, and I think we would deprive them of an opportunity if we didn't bring it forward. So, that's, uh, but we'll talk about that at the next ordinance committee meeting, and we'll schedule that meeting, uh, immediately following tonight's, uh, proceedings.
Okay. Um, under committee reports, uh, Jerry Hudlow cannot be here tonight, but he did ask for me to establish a time and a day for a budget committee session. This will have to go in the public.
When I.
Most of you have received an email, uh, Tuesday, November fifth, the only reply back that we got, I think, was from Kendall, that you could not be there on that.
Yeah, I'm out of town, I just didn't know what other days, is there any other days we can kick around?
Yeah, we were really limited on that, weren't we, Melanie, in setting that up?
Monday before is planning, day before? How about the sixth? Fourth? The church night, but.
Church night, yep.
Connor, you need to be aware.
What's the fourth, is that a?
What about the seventh?
You need to be aware of the dates too.
What about Saturday before?
Tom Hartman's will be gone, he's gonna be on vacation from the seventh to seventeen.
What about that Saturday before? And we do need our department head.
No, November.
At this meeting, so. What's Monday the fourth?
Monday the fourth is planning commission, is it?
The fourth and the eighteenth will be planning.
What about the first?
We need to, like, try to get in before the eighteenth.
I'll, I'll go on the record and say, if I'm the only one that's disrupting this, I have about a sixty percent chance I can change my, my out-of-townness, I guess. Is that, is that, I mean, so if I'm the only one that's holding this up, I don't wanna be that guy, I'll, I will go to my boss and see if I can.
Does anyone else on the budget committee have a conflict with Tuesday?
I'm always that guy.
Hmm.
Thanks. Did everybody else respond? We won't.
Connor, you.
The fifth, the fifth of, not October, November.
The, the fifth?
We won't finalize the budget that night.
November fifth? No, no, but it is an important budget meeting.
Keith will, Keith is chair of that committee too, and he's not here, so.
He got an email, we got no response that he could not be here.
I didn't get the email.
What?
Hmm.
I'm thinking November fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
Six o'clock? We're gonna step, well, we wanna talk about the time too, because of the nature of the meeting. What do you think about setting it at five thirty opposed to six or six thirty? I'm going to the senior. Okay, would that work, five thirty?
Five thirty.
Okay, five thirty on the fifth. Okay, that'll.
Well, he's been on.
Make most everyone very happy, if you could change your out-of-town.
I will do my best.
That would be great.
I'm putting in my counter.
And all the department heads have committed to that date as well. Okay.
Into the fire right off the bat there, Connor.
Um.
Budget. Fifth, five thirty of November, not October, because it was. She didn't hear you.
No.
Well, you had.
I might check with Jerry on that, but I think we need, in there.
On mine.
We'll check with Jerry on that. Yeah.
It's five thirty.
Um. Then on, this, this is a, um, schedule that, uh, Jerry has given me. Next budget meeting, he would like for us all to meet on the nineteenth from five thirty to six thirty prior to the council meeting. Would anyone have a conflict with being an hour early the next council meeting? Being at five thirty opposed to six thirty.
That's fine.
Trying to make this more of a convenience than any other thing, so.
Fine.
Five thirty. And what was that for?
The second budget meeting.
After the budget committee has met, then to approve the budget that night.
Oh.
To discuss anything before we did.
Okay, is this budget committee or is this budget workshop?
Well, this would be a workshop.
They're both workshops.
They're both workshops, because they're both prior.
That's a difference.
Yeah, so, so we have Tuesday, November fifth at five thirty, we have November nineteenth from five thirty to six thirty prior to the council meeting. Okay? Be sure to get those dates, and I will have Melanie send those times and dates to you again.
Okay.
Uh, just to be certain of that. That brings us to announcements, Melanie, you wanna tell us about Mudfest?
I think I gave you. I think I put a schedule, we've got a schedule together for Mudfest now, that should be on your desk. Some of the chili cook-off stuff too. Yeah, Jeanette's been working really hard on the chili cook-off, so. I challenge you all to enter.
I just thought of a question, I'm sorry, Melanie. Mr. Mayor, do you know, is the plan on the fifth when we're gonna see the budget package for the first time, or are we gonna try to get it out a few days, a week before?
I don't know if he'll send it out prior, but I know that you'll see it.
Sorry, Melanie, I didn't mean to. I was just thinking, if I didn't make it, maybe I could have some comments.
Okay.
Sent in, if I had some time to review it.
Connor. Connor.
I'm, I'm sure that can be arranged.
Sorry, sorry, Melanie.
No, that's fine. Um, I don't really have a whole lot of new to say, we've got a really good band that has agreed to play, so we've got...
And we've got some awesome chili coming.
Okay, awesome chili, there's gonna be...
I've got two awesome judges so far.
You got them handpicked, huh?
Yeah, she probably did.
Nice.
There's gonna be a bicycle parade, too, that if you've got any kids, any, any children, you need to get them to decorate their bicycle for the parade.
We also have a departmental competition.
For the chili cook-off.
For the chili cook.
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
She has a one-track mind, don't worry about it.
It's like...
But that's it, please come, please enjoy.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Mayor, if I may ask something, tell me, um, the thirty-first of October? The, uh, trunk or treat over here?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to invite everybody else to that.
That went out in the newsletter as well, so...
Yeah.
I'd be expecting a huge crowd.
Well, last year, we had twenty-five hundred.
Mm. Uh, let me give a few other reminders here, uh, Connor, this'd be an excellent opportunity for you, too, we, um, we have an, uh, AML conference coming up, January twenty-ninth through thirty-first, John Q Hammond's center.
Nobody has an excuse for not attending.
Yeah, all of us ought to make a special attempt to be there since the Embassy Suites, and John Q Hammond will be hosting that during that time period. It's an excellent way to fast-track, uh, training program on what the councilman's duties are and that type of thing, and it is paid for, and so if you wanna check with, uh, Melanie Houston, she can arrange, um, registration for you at that time. Uh, or any other council member. Um, November seventh, noon, two P M, uh, we have the museum salute to veterans past and present, with, uh, the Boy Scouts performing the Color Guard presentation. Uh, Liz Estes has been working very diligently and hard on this, uh, Elsa Tucker will be there, we're gonna see that, uh, if Guy Shoemaker can be there, and some other veterans of, um, the community as well. Uh, several have asked how Guy Shoemaker has been doing, he, uh, he needs your prayers, he's, he has a leg that's just really giving him, uh, some fits right now, and, uh, it's not looking too promising. Um, fourth item, museum Christmas open house, I feel like you should be doing these announcements, December twentieth, from five to seven P M, refreshments and entertainment, break in silence, the, the same band that we had last year, we listened to them, and they were a great band, I just wish there had been more there to hear them perform. Another thing that we have tonight, and this should have been laid in front of your, uh, chair tonight, is the B C Alert system, the memorandum of agreement, uh, that's, uh, our participation to continue to be a member of that warning, uh, system that the county, Big County, uh, government aids, uh, other municipalities with. Um, number six, Northwest Arkansas, did you get that clip? Patrick, I wish we'd played this earlier now that everyone's left, but I don't know if you seen this on the news the other night, but it kinda made my chest stick up, and proud I was... Right here it is, can you turn the audio up? I tell you, law to be number three in the state, or a little town. I, I, hopefully, I send each of the council members and the planning commission that video, and I just want you to know that it takes good decision-making upon the council, the planning commission, the department heads, it takes everyone to get that type of attention, and it's something we've been striving at, hopefully, the city will continue to strive at these quality of life issues that makes, um, our community an excellent place for raising a family, I was very proud to see that, and that we received that notoriety at that point. That's all I have, unless anyone has any further announcements, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Okay, we have one more announcement?
Um, this may be a question for Tom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on a body of eight of the council, it takes six to pass it, am I right?
Five.
On a body of eight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right, okay.
Typical majority.
So, if there's six at, at tonight, okay, yeah, five, at any given time.
Yes, sir.
Unless it's a certain...
So, if two's, two's gone, and one says no, does it pass or not?
Passes.
Yes, that means there's five.
It depends, if it's certain things, then you sort of have to have...
Resolution. I understood there would be no math, but I, I think what you're saying, Ronnie, is, can something pass with four votes? And the answer is no, four votes does not pass an item, with the rare exception of, believe it or not, the appointment of a vacancy.
No.
Because then you end up with seven, and the state law is, one of those rare times, the state law says, a majority of the remaining members, otherwise, in Lowell, something will always require five votes. Keep in mind, Ronnie, that the mayor can always be the fifth vote.
The reason I was asking is, I was referring to Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two.
Does the mayor still hold the power of veto?
Not only does the mayor hold the power of veto, the mayor holds the gavel and may throw the gavel.
Speaking of the gavel. Okay, uh, do we have a motion on the floor? Did anybody make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
You made it?
I'm backing it right now.
Second, but ain't...